Call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to the September 23rd work session. Tonight, Board Member Lisa Moore will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. If you would, please join the board in a moment of silence for our longtime Smyrna High School teacher Kenny Anderson. And let's remember an employee of Robert S. Biskin Company who was fatally injured in a backhoe accident on the Eagleville Phase One construction site today. So, we're in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our thoughts and prayers are with these families through this most difficult time. Any questions regarding the agenda? Chairman Hodge had, we've talked about this before, and I think you wanted to lead the discussion because you asked for this to be on the agenda regarding the extension of employment contract for our Director of Schools. I thought we'd just go ahead and discuss it tonight, and then we can vote Thursday night.
First of all, let me just tell you, thank you for putting it on the agenda for us. Back last spring, I had discussions with Mr. Odom in regards to possibly an extension, I believe probably March, April, somewhere around in there. At that time, he indicated to me that he would rather wait till the elections for new officers and new school year started. So, and I briefly spoke to him within the last month, and he's got interest in looking into another year, and that's what I would propose when the time comes. I know we haven't did an evaluation for this year yet, but I think we all pretty well know what the job is he's done and how we scored as far as the district goes and everything. So, that's what I'll propose, and be open to, you know, any suggestions from anybody.
Yes, sir. I know, Mr. Holliday, you had had conversation also with Mr. Odom regarding his extension too.
I had, and I'm pleased to know that Mr. Odom is receptive to this possibility. It is challenging, I know, for new board members to step in and immediately have such an important decision to make, and I'm thankful for the familiarity that each of our new board members have with Mr. Odom, and hope that they can feel comfortable as this possibility is considered.
Well, and I'm comfortable with it being on the agenda, as I said in the media the other day, that Ms. Moore has been attending meetings for well over a year, and had been involved with quite a few of the central office members. And Mr. Estes, a longtime educator and very familiar with our programs, and of course, former Health Ed Chairman Jeff Jordan, you probably know it as well as any of us. So, I'm very comfortable with us actually taking a vote. And notwithstanding, I don't know that you could have had a much better evaluation than you had the last time, Mr. Odom. So, not only outstanding performance, but considering a legislature and a State Department of Education that keeps throwing things down the pike, your leadership has certainly been treasured, and I think I called you the most valuable player, and I think that moniker certainly sticks, so.
Thank you. One of the reasons I really wanted to wait is because I work for you, and it just makes sense for the new people here to be the ones voting. That's just made sense to me to do that, if you want to know the truth.
Well, and I certainly appreciate how you keep us all in the loop, you know. You don't allow us to be surprised, and I'm very grateful for that. Anybody else? Okay. Any questions on the consent agenda? Number seven visitors will take care of that Thursday night, if any. Number eight, I assume, will also take care of that Thursday night.
Jenna Stitzelitz, she's actually received another grant. We thought it would be a good time since we have three new board members. She's a prolific grant writer for us, and she is our school health, coordinated school health person for Rutherford County. But give you a chance to meet her, and she can make the announcement of how many her grants and exactly her latest one, what she's doing for the schools. So, we'll let her do that Thursday night.
And did you want to talk about number nine tonight, or did you want to wait till Thursday night on that?
I mean, I think you kind of were, and this was initially, it was in the paper today too, but it was initiated basically by Oakland High School because of Mr. Daniels' time at Oakland, winning the track and field championship, you know, when he was there. So, I was very open to that. Under our policy 3.210, the Director of School makes a recommendation to the Board for naming a portion of the school campus which will, the track facility to honor Mr. Melvin Daniels, and we'll make that recommendation Thursday night.
I think we've traditionally, you've traditionally taken those recommendations from the principal or the...
They typically initiate it, and Oakland's had several facilities named for people that have been associated with Oakland High School over the years, and same in Smyrna, but the Rady Stadium and all was the one for Charisa and all, so.
Anything else? Number 10.
Number 10, this is approval of the Work-Based Learning Pilot Program course. The Career and Technical Education Department is requesting approval of the Work-Based Course 6105 to use the curriculum and standards in the pilot program. These changes will take effect during the spring semester 2015 to be implemented across the state in 2015-2016 school year. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the Work-Based Learning Course 6105 to use the curriculum and standards in the pilot program. These changes will take effect during the spring semester 2015 to be implemented across the state in the 2015-2016 school year. I thought it was quite an honor that the state asked us to pilot this program for them. And this deals with some of the courses of our piloting in the past of the Mechatronics and some of the things that we're doing. We honestly have one of the very best career and technical education programs in the state of Tennessee, bar none. The state recognized this, so they're going to let us pilot it and the course number. Remember, we come to you for courses, Board has to approve courses taught, and so you get the big list usually in February, March, you know, for the upcoming year, but this is a new one that the state, we're interested in doing for them, and so we'll bring this one in. Mr. Zago, we also have another thing that the state's talking to us about.
I'll elaborate a little bit more about this one. This opens us up for an opportunity for a grant from the state as well to provide us some more funding in our CTE program. We're working on for that grant now. We hadn't mentioned it here because, of course, we had to receive it, and we don't want to bring those hopes up too much before we get that completed, but it seems like it's a great opportunity to do some things for our students there. We're also working on, working with Rutherford County EMS service, getting one of our Smyrna High School Health Service teachers certified for EMS. That'll be the only opportunity in Rutherford County or anywhere in middle Tennessee to have that EMS class taught by a certified person in the health services for our students. We've got a first class of about 20 students that'll start in that very soon. It'll be on our agenda coming up in our next board meeting.
Work-based learning, this is still classroom setting. We're not off-campus yet, are we?
It's very much like the Mechatronics, it's some of the things that we're already doing and kind of tailoring it towards some of the things that the state wanted us to pilot before they do a full-blown implementation. And they're going to use a lot of our knowledge that we've leaned over the past couple of years, and they've been modeling their program from ours. And with them being able to say Rutherford County piloted this for the spring of 2015, it'll carry a lot more weight to the State Department as well.
Is there anything that we have access to that allows a student to receive course credit for off-site, you know, work partnership, co-op type of setting?
We do a co-op, but that's with all of the CTE classes in the field that that student is studying to. We do that in all of our high schools, but this right here is off-site and on-site in technical training as well.
Of course, the Mechatronics, which is part of the high school credit too, but they actually go to Bridgestone, you know, for that training. We're also working on another program. The state is doing another technology center across from Nissan. We're in talks with Nissan and all with that because they're also interested in training people to be their future employees, so this is part of some of the things that they're looking at to do there.
I add to your aspect to it too, because we have a lack of IT people all of a sudden available for some of those positions. At one point, we had a lot of those, and now it's gone where they need some more IT people.
When manufacturing went overseas, the people that were doing much of this work, their industrial maintenance technicians, a lot of those, they're the people who, when something breaks down, they go out into the work area to try to analyze it. Once upon a time, businesses would have somebody to do the electricity to check it, somebody to do the pneumatics, somebody that might look at the mechanical. What they really want now is that person that's so trained that, hey, that machine stopped working, go down there and make the analysis and see that it gets fixed. So, there, and these people, in the years that it went overseas with the manufacturing, these people have gotten older, and there are not very many of them left. So, they're literally recruiting all over the country trying to find people to fill these positions. They're good-paying positions. So, we've got some other initiatives that later on this year, that we're working with a manufacturers group here in Rutherford County because there's some Tuvin dies, not just Nissan and Bridgestone, that are also interested in these people with these skills too. And so, we're going to be working with them some more, and especially with some of our eighth graders, rolling out some of their information, that opportunities for them as the year goes along. So, kind of exciting, we're on the cutting edge of this. Our people actually did go and speak to Governor Haslam early on, some of them at Oakland did, if you remember, and all with that. So, I think we've got everybody behind us in this.
With this being a pilot program, is it something that will be offered at all of the schools, or is it going to be a limited opportunity?
If, one of the things that may catch us, it may be, we may not be able to offer it everywhere simply because sometimes the cost, because some of the machinery that comes to this may be, we're looking at Carl Perkins money, which is federal monies, maybe around $100,000.
Well, over $100,000, that we're using for that. So, it's kind of cost-producing, but at every school. But each one of our schools has CTE classes that are very specific to that school. For example, Stooks Creek has some of the dentistry or some of the veterinarian-type things that are there. And once again, I mentioned the Smyrna High, the EMS, that'll be only at Smyrna High if that causes the opportunity. It's kind of the hook each one of those schools has for their CTE classes.
Ms. Moore, we have courses that's offered everywhere. Typically, your ag and your horticulture's everywhere, your business courses are offered pretty much everywhere, the beginning health science is offered everywhere. One of the other things that Ms. Nixon and Ms. Pilgrim kind of try to watch for us, the other thing that you don't want to do is put so many, we have cosmetology in a couple of places. You don't want so many trained in one thing that then your students start having trouble getting a job. So, at the same time, while we have a lot of common courses, we do have specialty courses in certain places so that we'll not oversupply, you know, in the area too. So, it's kind of a balance there, and it changes all the time.
What would be nice is to get this grant since they tend to send us unfunded mandates, and to actually get some money back from them would be kind of nice.
You're correct about most of the areas there at the State Department. CTE is one of the not-so-typical areas. They tend to send funding, you know, with some of the things that they're doing, and it would be wonderful to have those kinds of funds for that program.
Anything else? All right, ready for number 11.
Number 11 actually turns out to be another thing the state is doing. Approval of academic intervention focus area. The curriculum instruction department is seeking the approval of an academic intervention focus area for high schools. This focus area could be used by students needing intensive reading or math interventions beyond their ninth grade year. The state has approved their Tier Three intervention codes for 3017 for English Language Arts and 3180 for mathematics. Students receive a one-half credit per course, and these courses may be repeated as needed. The Tier Three courses are elective courses beyond the required English Language Arts and mathematics classes needed for graduation. These courses will be taught by a certified teacher and offered as described in the component 4.2 of the state's RTI-Square framework. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the academic intervention focus areas for high schools.
Let me kind of explain to you what this is too. Some students need more than one block to get through Algebra I or English or something like that. So, the state is setting up some course numbers that will allow the student that needs extra time, needs a little extra instruction on it, maybe a double-block period or something, Mr. Estes that we're talking about. But the nice thing about this, the period of time that you have in this, the kids can get credit for it. You know, they can get their Algebra I credit, but they can also get credit in this, they can get this half credit, and you can expand the time that they're exposed to that content. It will not replace the basic requirement of four years of math for high school and four years of English, but it is more of a creative way to increase the time. The old professional learning community thing is additional time and support. Well, this is the additional time and also additional support, because typically, you again get the certified teacher to give those students, doubling up the time, somebody to help them get through that course. I mean, our goal is, we want them to get a high school diploma, you know? I mean, now we've got Tennessee Promise out there and all in front of us, so it's extra support under this Tier Three. Remember, Tier One is regular classroom instruction, Tier Two is some extra support with additional time, Tier Three is the most intensive support, additional support for the student. And if Tier Three doesn't work, then we consider, under this new plan, you consider special education, basically, could be the next step that you're looking at. So, this is not special education, but it's this graduated approach to try to address the needs of the students.
It also could become their focus area too.
Could.
And that gives them the ability to meet those requirements to receive that diploma as well when they're getting that additional help so that they are giving the basics in order to do that.
Is this normally a freshman?
It could be anything. It's typically sophomores and juniors.
Okay.
Not typical freshmen.
Okay.
Do we have any idea how many youngsters we're talking about?
We have plotted that for each one of the high schools, depending on the high school will give you the numbers. And what we're doing is looking at those students that are below that 10th percentile or in the bottom fifth percentile. I'm not saying the bottom 5% of students, but scoring in that fifth percentile or lower, that meaning that they would be in the bottom five of 100 average students or 100 students typical group of students. I've looked at several, and it ranges from a dozen to about 40 students depending on the high school. And that's looking at incoming freshmen only as a group that we would recommend for more intensive reading.
So, this would add a class to their average day? How would that be handled with their regular curriculum?
It would be in their regular scheduled day. It would replace an elective that they would choose such as a CTE or some other that, it's difficult to meet those other requirements in those other classes if you don't have the basics of reading. And this is very basic class. This is, in some of our systems, and Mr. Odom and I have been discussing, a couple of other systems that have done similar, they've actually hired elementary teachers to teach reading in the high school level, and that's how basic this is because we've got, in some cases, that dozen to 40 students that are reading on that fourth or fifth grade level. It's interfering with them and their ability to pass those other ELC classes and...
We have a seven-period day, and in four years, that's 28 possible credits, and it requires 23. Rutherford County requires one more than the state. So, they have 28 opportunities basically to get the 23 credits. So, these would be elective courses. So, we have some that we can do that to help that student, you know, acquire that. So, that's the purpose of these.
It doesn't, I'm sorry, Mr. Odom, I apologize. It doesn't prevent them from having a CTE focus either, though. They can have this focus and a CTE focus with the 22 opportunities. It's just that they're receiving credit just in case we don't, we end up in a bind when we become a senior, so that we can definitely get you a regular high school diploma.
We have the personnel on staff to...
We're actually using something very similar at Smyrna, Laverne, and Oakland that we've started piloting this year.
We're actually teaching reading at some of those high schools.
Almost all the freshmen in Laverne receive either a remedial or an advanced reading class depending on their reading level that are in Laverne. We have, and we're seeing great returns in that with a lot of some other things that Mr. Ash has done there. They had some of our highest growth in English One, Two, and Three of all the high schools that we had.
Please don't take my question as that I'm opposed to this, though certainly I'm not.
No, sir. I'm trying to give you as much information.
Yes, sir.
You're a school person, you got the dynamics, stay at the front of you.
I know, I wouldn't be the only one that would be interested in additional personnel if that was required, let's put it that way. And I want to get that question out there.
If we have the larger group of students, yes, it may cause us to have another English or a reading-type specialty position, but we're looking at a handful of positions out of 100.
If you take your just simple math, if it's the 5% that need this, we have about 3,200 students per grade or something saying high school, so you may be looking at 160 students. If it's 7, 8, 10%, it's the same kind of mathematics. It would vary a little bit. So, that's, you're not talking about huge numbers, but you're talking about students that need it especially.
And we have a plan where we're implementing all of these in the elementary grade levels from K through 8 as well, and we're seeing returns on that as well with reducing the number of students that we're having that are exiting eighth grade that are needing additional support in that reading, in their basic reading skills. And we're also implementing two training programs for all of our middle school and high school English teachers where they're spending additional time learning how to teach reading. And I guarantee you, all the reading teachers or English Language Arts teachers in middle and high school will tell you, they were never taught, for the most part, how to teach reading like at kindergarten versus second grade. And that's what we're doing as well so that we can implement those in those grade levels and reduce the number. But it won't be just freshmen, it'll be mostly sophomore and juniors as well. So, as we reduce that number, it is absolutely the plan and hopes of all of us to have that number zero when we're leaving as a junior.
Thank you. If we're piloting this or we're doing something very similar to this at Smyrna and Laverne right now, and yet it's not an approved course, is it happening in that flex time around lunch?
We have approved courses that are reading in the subject area that we're utilizing that have been approved, but this, these courses and course numbers allow us to make it a focus area if we need to do that for that student's benefit.
And by focus area, instead of graduating with a fine arts focus or a CTE focus, they would graduate with a...
With this reading or mathematics, you know...
A reading focus.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Currently, you say we're using some type of other course heading?
We've always had some courses available that are reading in the subject areas or mathematics.
The state had reading in the content areas, what they called it.
Okay.
Which they've had for a number of years.
So, this is kind of just changing the title of...
It's changing the title, but changing the intensity of it a little bit more.
Focus of that, when we're doing a reading in, say, a reading in math or a reading in history or class or whatever we're doing, you end up bringing a lot of other things in that's maybe not focused on that skill that that student needs. We're talking about, some students are blending letters still, I mean, the comprehension, all of those types of things that are not taught in English One, Two, or Three class. And if we're reading in that subject area, we're still not doing that because we don't have that focused instructional strategy, and we're doing that with this and really becoming very focused on it. We have three very specialized people in those three schools, Oakland, Laverne, and Smyrna, that are very focused on reading skills.
What's the typical path to entering into a Tier Three type of setting? Is this a mutual consent between the students?
Universal screener. You remember, we talked about universal screeners?
And so, if the universal...
And we have screened, how many you told me this week?
We screened 25,209 students so far this year.
Wow.
Mr. Odom, that was a miracle, we pulled that off a couple of ways.
So, the universal screeners, do you have to, and I mean, if they score high on this universal screener, you know, they may be Tier One, stay Tier One, they don't have to have other instruction, but those that are Tier Two and Tier Three, again, we require to do re-screening of those to see how it's progressing. If it isn't progressing, then you have to change what you're doing, your methodology.
Yes, sir.
To come back and try a different approach with that child. It's really individualized. We don't have an IEP for everybody, but this gets about as close to it as you can get.
It's as close to it as possible. There's also, Mr. Holliday, if you're concerned about parents and their notification, there's a part in that framework where we do notifications there and notifications, but there is also a requirement at the State Department to deal with that and directly work with that. We have received a waiver for not including high school in our RTI-Square program for this school year and the 2015, the 16th school year, but it's a disservice to our children if we can begin that and begin piloting that so that we don't let students leave without those skills necessary to become productive citizens and earn a living wage. So, we're really working hard to progress into that over the next two years so that when it's mandated, it will be an easy step for us, it will no longer be a mountain.
My concern is the scheduling process, and if a student were to drop into Tier Three by establishing these courses, are we in effect saying to them, you're no longer in control of selecting your classes, your classes are selected for you?
Well, certain classes are definitely selected for them no matter what. We have to take English One, English Two, English Three, we have to take certain classes, but this would be, but once again, these students are in the fifth percentile and lower. If we can't read and comprehend our reading and we can't do basic mathematics, I don't know if selecting your classes will benefit you once you exit high school and you don't have a diploma. This is a track for students that are not necessarily academically on track to receive a standard academic high school diploma.
I guess I'm still, I think the answer that I got was, that's right, they won't be able to select their classes, their classes will be selected for them.
No, see, I think they still take CTE, yeah. No, I don't think, I don't think, these are half-credit, which is typically a half-year. Out of that, out of that 28 possible credits, you know, there's certainly possibility to get, because the real required is your science, the social studies, the two foreign language, you know, the math and the English. And then beyond that, I mean, we do not now for any student pick all 23 credits for them. I mean, they have that flexibility, plus the additional periods in the day that allow you to earn the others. So, we have students doing two elective focuses and all, even two in CTE.
The Tier Three is not an optional program for any student from kindergarten through 12th grade.
It's not optional?
No, sir, it's not. Not if we're doing our job.
Well, and I'm not splitting hairs, but I just want to make sure, is it not optional if we're doing our job? Well, and and I'm not splitting hairs, but I just want to make sure, is it not optional if we're doing our job? Or is it just not optional?
It's not optional to not receive additional help if you if you need that help.
Okay. So i- even if, you know, because there's a consent there, you know, in the in the student and then there's a mandate by the state. And I'm and I'm wondering, you know, which takes precedent because, you know, a student can say, I need help and we have help available and we are required to have help available. The student consents, we have help available, we make a match. But if the student says, I don't want your help, then does tier three RTI squared take precedent? And you get that help regardless? And I'm just trying to understand, you know, which weighs out in that certain setting? Because it does come up from time to time when we say, sorry, you can't sign up for ROTC. You don't have an extra class period.
This doesn't prevent you from, like I said, from the other CTE classes. Once again, if you have a full credit for your freshman year, a full credit for your sophomore year, and a full credit, which is the two half credits for your junior year, that's still just three of twenty eight credits. There's twenty five additional credits. You could still have a foreign language, you know, a different CTE class. You could have all those other focus areas. This though, once again, is for those students that have to. And yes, sir, you're correct. There isn't an option to that. I mean, you have to learn. We sometimes when we give young men and young ladies options to do some things, they choose and make a poor decision when they're very young in their life. And as adults, we have to guide them to do the right things sometimes.
One of the things in professional learning communities, one of their things that they teach you is if you need additional support, it's not optional. I mean, you know, we're here to help you. If you let, if you let a thirteen year old choose, the choices are not great sometimes. So but but it's amazing when the kid starts getting it and they start learning it, how that begins to open doors and and they'll look back someday and say.
I agree with 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 the sentiment that you're expressing. I agree with the intentions of the central office, the administration, and and what this program is trying to accomplish. Nonetheless, I still, as a liaison between the school system and the community, as a board member, I still get the phone call that says they won't let my kid fill in the blank because he's fallen behind or she's fallen behind and they're requiring them to do this. And well, that's just not what they're really good at. And I'm trying to formulate in my mind how I respond to that and when when do I say the state made me do it? And when do I say Rutherford County decided we're gonna do it? And when do I say your kid made poor decisions and you've ended up at a place where you've got to do it? And and how do I respond? So my questions are with that intention to understand it specifically and be able to respond specifically.
I would hope that the administrator or the person working with that student, that parent, would sit them down and look at several of the things that are third party, of, 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 what I'm looking for. Third party types of statements of predictors of students. For example, you could go to the EVAS website, which is run by SAS, and it'll do predictors of what a student will make on an ACT score or whether they'll be proficient in English one, English two, or English three, or whether they'll be proficient in Algebra one, or biology, or all of those other things. And I set you down as a parent and I say, here's what a third party has predicted for your your student. Here is a plan that we're offering. And I've had this conversation with many parents saying, look, what I'm offering you is fifty minutes of private, basically private tutoring per day, five days a week to help your student catch up to where we have either, you know, we've had something happen in your life that's caused you to be in a high or we failed you as a as a student in previous years, whatever that caused. But I sit them down and hopefully administrator and those persons will sit them down and explain that to them and say, this is in your child's best interest and we're providing you an opportunity or actually, we're requiring you to catch up. And this is what you are having that you don't have to pay for. Can you imagine paying for five days a week, fifty additional minutes for basically small group tutoring? I don't know what the private outside entities charge for that because I've never paid for that myself, but I'd say it's quite expensive.
The Department of R and M did a study of the most difficult reading. And it's what Mr. Jim Estes of there is, is technical manuals. When the Department of R and M did the thing, reading and interpreting technical manuals that now go with repairing automobiles or there are other things you do is the most difficult reading level for a student. So very often people are saying, you know, but I want to do this. But the day has changed from when you could could not go back to the manuals or the design to look at. So the desire, of course, the the drive to fifty five that the gunner's talking about, right now, we we were on the radio Monday morning. Have you heard it? Not along with, I was on there with a couple of the the girls back there to do our counseling. And we talked about Tennessee Promise, you know, and the thing. And so right now Tennessee has about thirty two percent, you know. So the goal is that by twenty twenty five, that fifty five percent of the kids that that graduate from high school or Tennessee, Tennessee residents really will have skills beyond the high school level, be it two year college, be it technical or trade school, or whatever it might be. So it's just to try to make, one of the things that makes Tennessee competitive and a place where businesses want to locate. And I, you know, we're kind, I think we're really kind of well on our way. Tennessee may very well be, in fact, I've heard it is, but I I don't know what goes on in every state, that now, starting with twenty fifteen, is the first state in the nation that they can have a free public education from kindergarten through two years after high school. With the Tennessee Promise program.
Shouldn't if the RTI squared program, when it works like it's supposed to, we reduce in high school the number of classes like that?
That's the goal.
Absolutely, yes, sir. We're hoping that to reduce that by half in the next two years.
It looks like, you know, the way it's set up, I know Rutherford County's investing a lot of money in RTI. And everybody would be surprised at the number of high school students I've had that could not read. And if they can't read, they can't make a living. So that's what we're after.
It is. Make them independent.
You gotta have math and you gotta have reading. You know, have those two a year.
Without doing that, you can't earn a living, like, it's very good.
You can.
And hopefully in two or three years, you'll have one teacher that helps the ones that get behind for some reason in high school. And that'll be all we'll need maybe.
With the four years of math in high school, at one time, eighth grade algebra was very popular. Now that you have to have the four years of mathematics, is there still the same number of students taking?
More students in Algebra one this year than we've had in the past because we're finding students are better and better prepared from those younger grades to be able to have those more intensive academic subjects. It just gives them an opportunity to have that advanced math or another type of math as a senior. A lot of students are really pushing. I get a lot of phone calls from parents saying, my son missed the cutoff score and I really think he can do that. He is planning on being an engineer. We're working on his STEM, you know, we're looking at a STEM type job. We really want to see that, you know, and we discuss that and talk with parents.
Do they, do they have that opportunity in seventh grade or is it just eighth?
We typically hold, we're trying to hold it more towards eighth grade this time. And what we've done this year, beginning this year, is having an advanced math for sixth grade where you're teaching, and we're teaching math class at sixth grade, where it's sixth grade and part of seventh grade because we were finding some holes in students when we got them to high school. And then as a seventh grade student, when you're scoring into those advanced type math instead of going to an Algebra one where you're taking geometry as an eighth grader, we're teaching you the rest of seventh grade and all of eighth grade as a seventh grade student. Then when you get to eighth grade, you're prepared for that Algebra one class and you're very successful. I think every student we had in Algebra one last year scored advanced on the state assessment.
With two years of more rigorous instruction in math, we've had the two prior years, more kids qualified for algebra this year than we've had in a number of years. And so we're offering that to them in eighth grade now. Now, in high school, they still take four, you know, some, some will choose calculus, some will choose statistics, you know, or other, other types of math that's available. But more kids are stepping up. It's been interesting when you rate, the bar was raised and they're getting up there with it. That's the good thing.
Does the Tennessee standard on high school credits allow for anything to be pulled forward? You know, like that eighth grade Algebra one credit?
Yes, sir. It's a credit in high school, but you're still required to have four maths, including the last year you were in high school.
You have to take, you have to take a a math course each year of high school is the way the state board is written.
You have to have four credits. It doesn't mean you have to pass all of those opportunities. But you have to have four, four math credits and you had to have taken a math class each one of those four years.
Okay.
We have a, a way of letting the students know that this is coming down the pike and that this, this is available to them?
Are we speaking to the math classes or?
Okay, math, fine.
Yep, yes, sir. We do. We talk to the middle school principals and those people and they disseminate that information at their schools.
We, we took at the TCAP assessments and you're gonna get an NCE and which is kind of a percentile rank, it's a national equivalent. So you can see the percentage and when you look at those kids, eighty five, ninety percentile and above, very, very likely these kids are capable. But we do have an algebra screening tool, you know, that we, that's separate and apart. And they take that and it kind of, you want them to be successful. We're not trying to beat them over the head with it. We want them to be successful. But we also, you know, want them to be challenging. So I think we're picking some really good kids now to do this.
We have two different assessments we use, the TCAP assessment and another screening tool that we use. The second screening tool doesn't allow for calculators, so you have to know that fluently in order to pass that assessment.
If the youngster knows that, that they are in danger, we use that term at least, of of having to take this additional instruction, which they might not want to do, and that would cause them to to lose perhaps their favorite course, their elective course or whatever. Common sense would say that they would make sure that they did not fall into that group. And many of the points that Mr. Holliday just made are really quite right. The people, there are people that will fall under this and will not want the additional instruction despite all those brilliant things that you just said and you were right on every one of them. And because they're not appreciative as we might hope.
I, I would like to think that that they didn't fully, they don't fully understand, not that they don't appreciate.
Okay. We can go that route if you want.
I'm in business of several dollars.
Is, in a, in a, is it possible, this, this may be a very foolish question, and I promise it's my last one, okay?
You're welcome.
Is, is it possible to have a school, we'll just talk about algebra, where eventually nobody falls into this because there's always going to be a bottom five?
No, it's not the bottom five percent. That's what I tried to explain.
Yeah, you did.
It's the fifth percentile and that's a ranking of students. If you took a hundred students from out of the country, you, and and they were that perfect average group of a hundred students, not, not all of them filling average rate, one of them would be ranked number one as in the lowest performing and one of them be the ninety ninth percentile, which is the highest performing student. This is that fifth percentile. That's the fifth lowest performing student and lower. It may only be three children. If you're looking at a hundred students and at, and I'm not gonna name schools, but if that that population of that is typically a higher performing group of population. I have one school that only had seven freshmen that were coming in. Then I had another one that had forty two and another one that had fifty four, I think was my top. If I pulled the marginal students, that may have been at the sixth or seventh percentile. Not the sixth or seven, not a six or seven percent. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And this may sound like a silly question, but if we're talking the fifth percentile in both math and English, English and Language Arts, I would make the assumption that these are kids that are going to be at risk of even finishing high school if they don't get that extra assistance in that.
That's the point. Yes, ma'am. That is. And we're trying to identify those students when they're in fourth and fifth grade and working with them. And we've done that in ten elementary schools last year and this year and three middle schools last year and all ten middle schools this year. So this is the second year for three of the middle schools and the second year for ten of our most at risk elementary schools. So we're reducing those numbers as they progress. But we still have that group of students that are headed as a freshman this year that have never seen us, that have never had the, the requirement of you must learn.
There's another thing the state allows too, for your most, you're still having the the most difficulty learning, you say, special education. They will allow, for their four maths, they will allow Algebra A, Algebra one A, Algebra one B, Geometry A, Geometry B, and that would give them their four courses taken over four years. So there, there is a stopgap measure for the most, students with the most difficulty that would allow them to still get their four credits in those courses. But that, that, there's not a lot of those kids, but there is another, another approach for that.
Most teachers' mantra is not all students learn at the same pace, but I can teach all students basically. So sometimes it takes longer to teach the algebra and geometry, those skills that they must have as adults.
Anything else?
Way too much, isn't it?
Live the conversation. Number twelve.
Number twelve is to address some issues. We have contract with Planet Technologies to migrate email to Office three sixty five. Rutherford County Employee, employee email will migrate from our current email exchange server to Microsoft Office three sixty five platform. In addition to email operation utilized in Microsoft, Microsoft three sixty five will allow teachers and faculties additional opportunities for online collaboration on documents, free cloud-based storage, and the ability to share documents to enhance planning and data analysis. Monitored student email accounts will be on the same system and allow students the opportunity to collaborate on assignments online and utilize the free cloud-based storage. This is a free service as part of the Office three sixty five education plan. Current Rutherford County School email addresses will not change. Trey Duke, Steve Solomon, Jeff Sandig, Richard Zagoe, and Gary Clardy met and reached a consensus that the best approach to have a successful migration is to have it managed by Planet Technologies and have at least one of our personnel trained in this system as in the migration, as the migration is being implemented. The Technology Department is requesting the approval of funds in an amount of thirty nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars to contract with Planet Technologies for professional services in assisting with the migration of our approximately five thousand user mailbox. Recommend approval, motion to approve a contract with Planet Technologies at a cost of thirty nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for management and migration of Rutherford County School's current email system to Office three sixty five education plan. This is a professional service. What is, what is happening is we're buying more and more memory. We keep sticking memory cards and things in to try to handle it. We've just got, we've gotten so large that there are times now that you can sign on and it'll take, the email just sits there for a while before it responds to you. You may be running into it. This allows us to do other variations, like for example, if we want to now, you get all, if we send something to all RCS, which is all Rutherford County, but you get it too. This, we can begin to divide up and maybe send a message to just the classified employees that pertains to them or the certified employees that pertains to them. The thing we have to realize and with students beginning to exchange ideas and work collaboratively, this is where they're gonna work. This is their future. And, you know, again, we have to look at ways to to begin prepare our students to to hold the job that they're gonna need when they get out. But we're in quicksand if we don't try to do some of this migration and deal with this.
We may not know the answer to this this evening, but when we talk about student email addresses, what would be the nature of that student email address? How would it be assigned? And is there any possibility of that email address being? it be assigned? And is there any possibility of that email address being uh unique or cloud-based enough that as they graduate and go on beyond, that they would continue to have access to that email address and yet move away from our server system? Because an email address somewhat becomes uh.
Like your home address.
Yeah, like your home address. And if we're talking about advanced sixth or seventh graders, you know, doing that type of collaboration, it may become their identity and it would be convenient uh if they could move on beyond our system.
To my knowledge, that can't happen. It's just like my home email address. It's Zagoe R two and here it's Zagoe R. It, and those, the, the X symbol from there on out. Those, those have to be unique to that once you've used that. But as far as how their email address is signed, it's basically their first name and last name. We had a pretty lively discussion about that today because we have students that have more than twenty-three or forty-four characters in their last name, you know, and so we have to limit it to twenty characters and there's uh, that will be assigned through the I Now program, the SDI student software, the student information software. We'll use that based on what their first name is and limit it to twenty characters.
This also brings to mind for me restoration of the five cent uh funding for capital projects and as we need to restore that for construction efforts and maintenance of our facilities, I think we, you know, if we're going to waive that banner and, and send that message and, and make that request of our funding body, we should go ahead and put in something that is essential to our future. And is it a penny, is it two pennies of technology? Because this is not unique that we need to update technology, just like we need to maintain our buildings. We will constantly from here on out have to maintain, update and improve our technology in order to stay current. It is exactly the same model and, and manner of thinking as we need to maintain our buildings that we'll need to maintain our technology. If we'll visit that with our funding body, we should visit it in, in respect to, we need to restore the complete five cents and add on something for technology and make it as earmarked as the, as the uh five cents is for uh facilities, that this two cents is for technology and use the funds that Murfreesboro City System uh received as an example of a worthy investment.
CTE ran into some issues. You know, Microsoft has stopped selling the standalone licenses to 365. They figured out they could make more money obviously by subscription method. Of course, one of the problems we're running into, especially high school career and technical education and the office training and those, when they leave us, they're gonna be on Office 365. So our technology people are examining. They do some special things for schools, some special pricing and some things, so probably not too far down the line, maybe even before the year's out, we're gonna have to make some decisions dealing with that because we, you know, get new computers in and all, we can't, we can't buy those standalone licenses anymore. We're, we're gonna be forced probably go to Office 365 to do it. So, but anyway, that's another piece that's coming down the road. It's just to keep your students prepared and, and to put the technology in, it's probably gonna happen.
Transition wise, uh, as far as implementation, should it be a pretty smooth switch over?
That's what, what this is. We're hiring this company to do the migration and it, and it's basically, our staff will be carrying it out with their direction here on site so that we'll have fully trained, fully experienced people once they leave us, this company, with people that have done the migrate, physically completed the migration of this. But yes, it should happen over a three-day period. We're giving ourselves a full week or nine-day period of time.
So as board members or anyone else?
It may be a fall break, it may be a spring break, but it'll be sometime before the end of the school year. We're gonna pick a time where we're typically not in the buildings and using those things. It may be over a Christmas break or something along that line, Ms. Clardy. That way we don't have the heavy use where it's gonna be down for that three days.
This is not an annual fee either. It's a migration, switch over. A lot of funds there are training our people to be able to handle and do it. So, you know, you, you make this change and you, but you're not having to come back with thirty-nine thousand next year because they, they train us as part of it to do it, so.
What, what Mr. Holliday did is the setup was perfect as far as what, why we're doing this here. We're actually afraid our system will crash before the end of the year.
Is there any concern at all with, I mean, all the things that have been in the news lately about security and privacy with cloud-based storage? I'm sure that's been talked about and addressed, but I'd like to know more about that.
Those are all the topics of discussion we have at all levels here. I can, I think my country answered that, is the Pentagon was hacked, you know, and so just about anyone can be hacked at any time. But we have those firewall that we're purchased and paid for through AT&T. We also have a lot of different software that's there that's in between us because the State Department does. For example, all of our student information system is housed on State Department hard drives. They're not housed here in our building, so it's behind all the state's firewalls as well. We've tried to do everything we physically or know how to do to limit any possible hacking of that information.
Even when it goes out on the cloud?
Now, this'll be the cloud-based internet, but it won't be cloud-based, you know, student information other than their email addresses or something like that.
But it would have the information that they've collaborated on, like in the projects and things that they're working on, right?
Yes, ma'am. They, they possibly could do something like that.
For those of us that are technologically challenged, will it be as simplistic to, to email as we presently?
Actually, it's better than what we have. It'll be much like what your Outlook or your, on your home computer looks like now, all of those links and those tabs and those types of things that we're accustomed to. That is not that web-based what we're seeing now. It'd be much easier to use. It'll be, be very typical of what you see on your, your home computer if you have the Office suite.
Can I interrupt you? I'm sorry. Will you, will you finish?
No, I'm stuck.
Oh, okay, thank you.
What, what are we spending uh, each year on memory updating?
That's a question I can't answer this afternoon. Uh, I can get you some information there, sure.
Well, I'm, I'm sure it's expensive and. How long would it take to recruit thirty-nine thousand dollars?
As far as, as far, this is just for the implementation and migration of this, but this, our information.
So we would have to keep updating.
Well, this is actually a savings of about forty-two, forty-one thousand dollars. And for us to upgrade what we currently have and not even increase our memory space, add another blade, it's eighty thousand dollars for the software upgrade. And we have an upgrade, we've missed four upgrades. We have skipped four upgrades so far. And, and you're an HR person. I see that you, that makes you, you, you kinda cringe, but we haven't made those last four upgrades because you're looking at eighty thousand dollars each upgrade. So you're looking at, at a huge amount.
A lot of the info that we have stored now on our storage will go onto the cloud. That'll also free up the storage, but we have got to have a major upgrade uh with the storage we have or do this. And it's expensive every year to go out and spend eighty thousand dollars on that. Things are changing. Files are getting bigger every day, just more information, more information. So it's a, it's a huge problem. And it's a big enough problem just to keep the equipment feeding the storage, but when you're trying to keep storage up with everything, it's a very costly situation.
What I was looking at when, last year we were working on some of the, the stopgaps that we were working on, we're looking at over ten thousand dollars per blade plus the eighty thousand dollar cost for this. And we still have to perform some kind of migration to a newer software.
We had a major expenditure this spring to upgrade our air conditioning to keep those blades cool. We've had to add so much. Those of you on the board remember that, that we had to go back and change out our tonnage on our air conditioning. How much was that amount?
Seventy thousand dollars.
To, just to keep them cool so they run. And so if you get, if you can do some of it off-site on the cloud, you begin to lessen your requirement to make it go.
The, the older servers put off a huge amount of heat. We can walk back there and sit in front of those servers. The ones that are five years old are putting, putting off tremendous amounts of heat and then the ones we purchased last year, you can lay your hand down.
No, they have placed a B in one of them.
Moving on to number thirteen?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The only part of the budget, I won't respond to something Mr. Holliday just said, and I think he's again right on, Holliday. Uh, the only part of the budget, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that didn't pass last year after you all got it within what the commission considered to be manageable numbers, I guess, was the nickel because it had eroded to what? Four, four and a half cents, four point six?
Four point four, I thought.
And part of your budget was to put it back at a nickel. That did not pass. It was the only thing that did. And I, I, I think that first of all, the nickel ought to be restored. Uh, and secondly, his, his idea, his, his statement a minute ago about looking at the uh technology as you would a building program, uh, or, or this nickel, which is really Dr. Bob Bullen's idea, which I think we all, I know the commission, I can speak to the commission on this. They like that, to have that nickel and that money allocated to certain smaller projects like roofs and all that stuff that you all know all about. But to, to ask for a penny or two for technology, I, I mean, that, that just makes perfect sense to me. I, I, you know, I, I think that'll, that'll be considered into, into the budget. Here I act like I know something about it and I don't even know when you start over your budget, but I, I can imagine it's gonna be pretty quick. And, and that's something that I, I think ought to be considered. I mean, everybody knows you don't buy computers and then, and then there it sits for the next fifty years and you're gonna be just fine. I mean, they, they, all this stuff's gotta be upgraded, just like a building, like you just said a minute ago.
It is recurring.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I have one other question. Um, the, the company that we're looking at to manage this migration, were there other companies that were involved in the process as far as having the opportunity to bid the business? Again, not being familiar with the process. I'm asking something.
Yes, ma'am, there were other companies that were involved. Both that, that this particular company has uh three different fellows, it's my understanding. They actually worked for Microsoft before going out on their own and creating this company. It had the best value and also had the most amount of knowledge that they would, and their owners are actually gonna be the people that are here helping us. And they have that experience with Microsoft 365 and were employed by Microsoft.
Thank you.
Anything else? Number thirteen, Mr. Odom.
Number thirteen is facilities and this is the Whitworth Buchanan Middle School baseball fence. Principal Abby Seymour has requested permission to construct a metal fence around the baseball field and construct a walk from the bleachers to the concession stand at Whitworth Buchanan Middle School. A site plan is enclosed with the board's information. There'll be a, a forty feet by one hundred foot uh building shown on the plan that is not part of this request. The fence will be six feet high, twenty-nine gauge green metal to match the school colors and forty-foot long by sixteen feet high batter's eye will be constructed at the boundary of center field. The fence, batter's eye and concrete walk will be constructed at no cost to the Rutherford County School Board with funds raised by the baseball team. Recommend approval. Motion to approve Whitworth Buchanan Middle School baseball fence and concrete as presented at no cost to the board.
Questions? B?
Let me see your B. Let, let me get my B. That's, that's one we updated late this afternoon. Proposal for energy management service, right. Mr. Ron Graham has submitted a professional services proposal to help our engineering department to submit an application for a grant for approximately five hundred thousand dollars from the Energy Efficiency School Initiative. Board and provide training on monitoring and other energy conservation items within the Rutherford County School System for Jeff Stacy, our energy manager. The cost of the proposal for Mr. Graham's services is nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. These services will help on the school board's policy on energy conservation, also help to monitor and verify cost savings. Recommend approval. Motion to approve the energy services contract with Juan Graham in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for grant application to the Energy Efficiency School Initiative Board, measurement and verification, and training for Jeff Stacy. This is also a professional service. If, we get, it, it, there's not many months go by that we're not contacted by somebody that offers to do energy management for us. Um, the issue is, they want a percentage of what they call your savings. You take a school system this size and if they say we save you two percent on electricity or something like that, it doesn't take you long to see how many dollars we're talking about. So we made, you made a choice as a board last year to hire our own energy management person, purchase some, we, we got grants to purchase some monitoring equipment of what schools using, um, and our thermostat police are already working. Um, and uh, you know, I come in in the morning, you can tell whether it just came on or, or not on, if we're cycling off and on. But we're, we're, we're trying to do more in-house and do more with grants rather than paying some outside firm that goes off with all of your savings. And dealing with, so this, this is another phase in doing that. If we can then apply for this grant, another, we can do more things that would have to be spent on energy conservation and energy management. So we're, we're trying to do more with a system our size, with the number of buildings we have than paying a third party s- a, a huge amount of your savings each year. It doesn't do a lot of good to save money if you have to give it to somebody else. You, you know what I'm saying?
I guess I was anticipating that writing the grants and pursuing uh these type of things would be something that Mr. Jeff Stacy's position would include, but it looks like that monitoring and reporting is really what Jeff Stacy is, is consumed with.
Why don't you step up and talk, let, let's let Mr. Clardy talk about that for you.
Sure. And another thing that I'm interested in, and you can include this in your response, is, is there any type of consideration given in discussions prior to this proposal or in this proposal, or have we considered that this proposal would be contingent on receiving any of those grants or interlaced with, you know, because sometimes with these grant services, there is almost a commission-type base uh of, of performance of receiving the grants. So I'll let you go on that.
First of all, I'd just like to say that the reason we chose Ron is because he's a single consultant. Uh, many times, you know, I've talked to enough ESCOs, energy service savings companies over the last three years to do me a lifetime. And the uh problem with them, as Mr. Odom referred to, is how can you tell what the savings are? Uh, there's no one educated in the group that and has um, is privy to the info that they have to actually tell uh if you are, if they're getting those savings or not, or if they're just carrying your money off with them. Uh, so we have chosen to go the route of hiring a energy manager who monitors and is trying to verify uh on the available equipment that and telemetry that we have in place at this time, digital controls. But we're also trying to move the program along. We know that we're having savings right now and we're beginning to, we're learning how to document that and figure that out. And as a matter of fact, Mr. Graham will be up to give us a full report to the board at hopefully next month's meeting. I haven't discussed this with Mr. Odom yet, but that's one of our plans. And uh, he'll have some of the software charts and things that we actually are in control of and that we can see every day on our computers to bring that information forward to you. Uh, Mr. Stacy has his handful with forty-six buildings or more with uh. Mr. Stacy has his handful with forty-six buildings or more with all the programs and everything else that's in, keeping up with that stuff at this time. As far as the grant, I was on the Technical Advisory Committee that made this available to the schools. We basically set it up so that the smaller schools that have not participated in the program would be able to participate and get more points because they are smaller as it goes through. But I believe that we have a great opportunity to get as much as $500,000 from this program at a, I think it's a three-quarter of a percent management fee every year on it instead of interest rate. So it's basically a interest-free loan. The, so we think this is the right approach instead of getting a big company in and trying to wade through all of their red tape to figure out if they're doing us any good or not. And I don't know if I answered all your questions or not, there's about four different questions in there. If I missed one, let me know.
The three-quarter percent management fee and interest-free loan. Go back over that because grant is free money, interest-free loan, we're paying back.
Well, it's, we're paying the money back. It's an interest-free loan, is what it is. And the Energy Efficiency School Initiative was set up by the legislature with ninety-nine million dollars of lottery money several years ago. I was appointed by the Lieutenant Governor to sit on the board of that. And we have tried to invest that money so that the fund is always there to help the schools in Tennessee throughout the state. So we have to have some type of return on that money because if we give it all away, the program's dead. So we feel like the money that is invested in the local systems with the savings, they can pay that back and pay a management fee on that to keep the fund intact and keep it, in fact, have a principal there to loan all of that.
And then the last question I had was, sometimes these contracts are, just like this one appears to be, $9,785 for services rendered. Other times, it's $5,000, but if we get a grant of $1,000, I get 10% of that grant or something of that type of nature. If it's an interest-free loan and not actually a grant, then that kind of relationship doesn't make sense. And so I understand now why the contract is set up the way it is.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Clardy. Okay, I think we're ready for number fourteen. Ms. Toder.
Number fourteen, Mr. Clardy has appointed the Policy Advisory Committee. This is for information only. For Policy 1.602, the following members have been appointed to serve on the Policy Advisory Committee. All school board members, Bill Tallett, principal, Kenneth Curley, educational support personnel, and Mr. Curley is over our maintenance department, Kim Franklin, classroom teacher, Chris Schaefer is a classroom teacher, that's Doug Schaefer's wife, Mr. Jordan, Dr. Phyllis Washington, which is, of course, supervisor secondary here at our office, Claudia Belden, citizen at large, and she's attended many of our meetings, and lives next door to Stewart's Creek High School down there, we know her, Laura Disney, Don Odom, director of schools, Angel McLeod, and Jeff Reed, the board attorney. That would be the policy committee for this year.
Okay. And we'll move on to number fifteen. And do you want me to take that one?
Yeah, probably.
We have three appointments for TSBA representation, and then one is a county-wide endeavor. The Federal Relations Network, Mr. Holliday has represented us last year and has expressed an interest to do it again. Mr. Holliday, I got quite a few compliments for you with the members that went with you to DC and your interaction with our members of Congress and our state, our federal senators. And you've certainly given several strong reports to the board and with board approval or agreement, I would like for you to stay on as our representative for the Federal Relations Network representative.
It's my honor.
Chairman Hodge has expressed an interest in being our Tennessee Legislative Network representative. Again, another position through TSBA. He'll be working closely with Lee Harrell, and Lee is extremely proficient in sending updates and alerts and keeping us posted on what's going on with the General Assembly, of course, with Chairman Hodge's years of experience on the board. And we've certainly had our time with the legislature the last couple of years, so I can't think of anybody better positioned to represent us with that position. So if you're willing to serve, Chairman. Okay. I have represented the board the last couple of years on the Audit Committee, and I've asked Mr. Young if he would serve the board in that position, and he has agreed. They meet probably two or three times a year, so it's not a lot of meetings. So I think you'll enjoy the opportunity, and there'll be not only citizens but also commission members on that board, too. So I personally will be attending, along with our board representative, Ms. Barnes and Mr. Sandvig, the insurance committee meetings. We have one Thursday, so I'll be attending that one. You're all certainly welcome to join me at that meeting, but I will make sure that I'm there. Other board members, if you would like to sign yourself to maybe Health Ed or Budget or maybe Planning Commission, if you would like to be involved with those and update the board, if you do, attend with a report, please let Ms. Michaels or myself know that that's what you're interested in doing. But I can assure you that Chairman Hodge and Mr. Holliday will certainly keep us informed from the state and federal legislation that will be coming down the pike here in the next few months. All right. We're to the point of general discussion. Anybody have anything? If I could interject, Ms. Jordan, I did not fail to, or did not neglect to welcome you. I thought we'd do that formally Thursday, but we're so familiar with you, with having been chairman of Health Ed, it's just like you're just, you know, one of the guys anyway. So, but we will formally welcome you. I can tell you that Ms. Moore and Mr. Estes are pleased that you're here because they are no longer the rookies. That designation is firmly in your grasp. So.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'm just hoping to be able to contribute. I appreciate it very much.
Certainly. I'm sure you will, again, after chairing Health Ed for all those years. So again, board members, any general discussion?
Offer the board an update. I checked with Mr. Tackett today about our cheer sponsor certification, and we're approaching our target date of being fully certified by October 15th. Those certifications are ongoing, and everything appears to be moving along smoothly. Mr. Tackett was very positive about the reception and the manner in which that's being accomplished.
Let me report back one thing about, several of you ask us to take a look at, of course, with the substitute teachers, when somebody's going to be out for an extended period of time, basically, we have this each year. Of course, the state requires, we work through our agency that gets substitutes for us, but after twenty days, you're supposed to have a certified teacher in place. Certified substitute in place. The issue that we run into, we'd like to have somebody certified before that. You know, we do play a little bit more for certified than we do for non-certified. I asked Jeff Sandvig to do a kind of a guestimate for us. If we were to back off and start paying much more quickly, relatively quickly, full pay, what you run into is you're paying two people for the same position. His estimate was that it might cost $500,000 a year. And the reason for us, which is so unique, unique kind of to us is the number of maternity leads for teachers and all, which they'll start with sick leave. So I'm not sure we can afford, certainly in this year's budget, to pay two people full amount. But what we're looking at, and we'll bring back to you, I could do it within the administrative procedures, but looking at something, picking a certain, say, after fifteen days or so many days, that we raise or increase the substitute pay for the certified people. And then, of course, whenever the sick leave runs out, they get the full pay. But it would, if we can come close to doubling or something to that amount, it still may encourage that person that doesn't have a regular teaching position but is certified to stay on in that position so the kids don't have as much turnover and prepare for that position. So we're going to look at, try to some way where we can meet, I'll do whatever you tell me, but probably somewhere in the middle, it comes down to dollars and cents, again, is really what it comes down to in trying to do that. So we'll come back to you. We talked about some today again, but we'll come back to you and talk about what do you think about this, moving towards to try to encourage certified people in our classroom all the time or as close as we possibly can.
Personally, I'll just speak personally myself. I think it's, I think it's something we ought to look at, to have some consistency in these classrooms versus having somebody every day or every other day, a new teacher in there trying to teach these students, and then it's something different all the time. So I appreciate you looking into it.
Thank you, Ms. Toder. Mr. Zegel, you've had a large part in this work session tonight.
I apologize.
Thank you for all the information.
Mr. Clardy, are there any plans to meet with the legislators again, city school board as well?
Coincidentally, Chairman Campbell and I had lunch last week, and we were, we will get an invitation from the city board to join them in a meeting, but we've got to make sure, wanted to poll this board and make sure that we were all interested and to come up with a date that would work for both boards. We want to go after the November 4th election, so we're trying to work it out between the 4th and Thanksgiving. And, of course, we have several meetings during that time, too. So it's a work in progress, Ms. Jordan. So yes, the answer is yes. I probably gave you more information you needed, but.
I do.
The answer is yes. Mr. Holliday?
I have kind of an out of the ordinary comment this evening. I got a call last week from a citizen here, a parent of some students in our schools, and they may come Thursday evening and have a visitor comment for us. And if they do, it took me well over an hour of conversation to fully grasp the concern that they had. And I think to myself and shared with them at the time, three minutes is going to be a challenge for you to get this across, if you care to do so. In the, with the possibility that they might come on Thursday evening, I wanted to give the board just a little bit of context. In essence, their concern was about an elementary field trip to the carton plantation over in Franklin. A, definitely a historic site, a part of our community that has significance educationally and really can do a lot to make the classroom education real and hands-on for students. This, again, was at the elementary level. It's a fifth grade field trip. And the concern that this parent was bringing to me, I'll characterize it this way. Something along the lines of, would you take a fifth grade Jewish student to a concentration camp? Would you take a fifth grade Japanese student to a World War II internment camp? Would you take, you know, that type of setting? The concern was, though it may have an educational opportunity, do they have a maturity level to be able to understand and grasp some of the negative aspects that could be there? For this family, it was the characterization of a plantation. And we spoke for quite some time, and we agreed that that field trip was going to take place. I was so pleased to hear from this parent that they had discussed this with the principal at that school and had a very positive conversation, that the parent was going to attend the field trip and have the opportunity to be able to have firsthand knowledge of exactly what occurred. I talked to the executive director today of the Sam Davis Home, and the Sam Davis Home in March debated at their board level and made a conscious decision to add to their name the historic Sam Davis Home and Plantation because it is significant from a historical and museum type of setting to have that designation that it is a plantation. I also looked into what's different between a plantation and a farm or something of that nature. Because there's, the real message in the comment that we may hear Thursday night is that there's a stigma around the word plantation. And there are still plantations today, and it's an agricultural designation between a farm that, well, a farm is something that also has livestock, a plantation only has crops. And so, you know, there is an agricultural definition and distinction there that's more than the historical context. There's a lot of complexity to this issue, and I hope the board can appreciate, I'm not advocating, I'm not suggesting, I'm not arguing somebody's point, but the complexity of the issue led me in a work session to say, heads up, if this comes and it's only three minutes long, you might not get a full grasp of everything that this person is trying to express. And I wanted to share the context of the conversation that I had with this citizen in the chance that they might happen to come. Again, so pleased to know that this citizen is taking the opportunity to be a parent chaperone, to witness things firsthand, and to be able to share in their household exactly their perspective on a period of time in history that is right in our backyard and gives us the opportunity to be able to see and feel and touch that part of history in a firsthand approach. There's value in that, but this citizen expressed some concern about it as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We'll see you back here Thursday evening. And if there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.